We're in here tonight, we've got several guests and several things on our agenda, so we'll go through those. First thing we're going to do is have our pledge believed us. And then we're going to have our youth director from First Baptist Church, Mr. Kevin Campbell-Cornell. He's going to pray for us and preach to us and anything else he wants to do. No, he's going to a doggie, but he is, we're glad to have Kevin. Welcome to Hamilton, Kevin, and our youths love you and right across the street at First Baptist. Proud of you here and glad you took the time to come and pray for us. First thing we'll do is have our pledge and I'll ask Tim for you to lead us in that and Kevin pray.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your Father, who is standeth, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you so much for the opportunity that you gave to us this morning when we woke up to have life. And God, we thank you so much for the opportunity that you gave us to receive eternal life through your Son. And God, we ask that while we're here tonight, that we can focus on making Hamilton a better place for the next generation. And we can focus on how we can do that through your love to all people. God bless our time here together, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
First thing on Agenda 9 is approve the minutes from our last council meeting on the 15th, August 15th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make my own.
Okay, here's our second.
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Paul in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second, Adam, is a motion to approve a special call meeting to campus to review election results. That is the next Monday. What was it, David, was that Hamilton? Lecture's on 23rd, no, 30th. Twenty, 29th.
Twenty ninth.
Yes, let me put the 29th in the minutes right there. Is there a motion to approve those minutes on the 29th? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Paul in favor, say aye. Number three is a recommendation to approve the campus payable for the month of August. Is there a motion to approve those bills? Okay, Francis, is there a second? Okay, Tim, thank you. Paul in favor, say aye. All right, Mr. Bert Henning is going to let you come and talk to us. Please, sir, I know you've got another meeting, about fifteen, twenty minutes. So we'll let you go first and glad to have you back, Bert. And appreciate you giving your mind.
I'm glad to be back. You guys, you guys being the most hostile gas district, hired my guy.
Well, you did, started him away, didn't you?
I'm telling you, it'll be years before I get over that. Actually, it won't because I have with me tonight Paul Burke-Halbert. Paul had worked today in the burning office, taking his position. He's a PE and a PLS, just like he worked for me years ago in Tuscaloosa. So Paul and I go back a long way. Really fortunate to find him. He'll be seamless, you guys will really learn to appreciate Paul as we go along. But I'm glad to have an opportunity to be with you for a little while and take me. I'm planning to get back in the trenches with him for a while and get him back up to full speed, that's what. So, we need to talk about the canoe launch, is that correct? As you remember, we advertised for bids for canoe launch, didn't get a bidder. So we got permission from Adecco to solicit proposals from contractors. During that process, we got, actually got two proposals. One from Ballard Construction in Monmouth for eighty-nine thousand four eighty-nine. And one from Dimac Contracting for ninety-six thousand dollars. So the eighty-nine thousand from Ballard is within a couple thousand dollars, actually about twenty-three hundred dollars of where the original budget was. Ballard has, we've worked with Ballard before and I don't have any problem with him being able to complete the work as he had it designed. So unless you guys have any questions about that or the process, we recommend that you award the contract to Ballard.
This is assigned company that did the revitalization downtown from Wichita.
And did you bring us a picture back? It's been a long time since we've looked at this.
A picture back of the, what we're supposed to do?
Yes.
I did.
Great.
I did. What it involves, if you can remember from the look at the plans coming, is that we have a pavilion that we're going to build up on, up on top, right next to the canoe pond. And there's a gravel drive that comes down toward the river to a concrete platform and a set of stairs and the slide, sort of, to so to speak, and build to get the canoe down into the creek.
So the building's only way up here?
The pavilion's right up there.
And is it in that?
It's just a pavilion.
It's just a parking up there.
I saw it was. We could put some, they don't come with it.
Not as a part of this contract, but you could start to hand it to them.
And where's the parking in relation to this?
The parking, this is the part of the big parking lot that's up at the mansion. This is like the eastern edge of all that, of that park area that ground.
Around the water, right?
Around the water.
So is this in relation to the water side, where is this?
Almost where the tank was, a little bit further.
Yeah, it's a little bit further.
East and a little, and a little bit further away from the road. This little squiggly line, that's the forested area, the front of trees on. It sits right up next to the tree line, corner of the tree line on that side.
And this is still going to be a road?
That's right, that's a gravel drive down to the.
So they're going to drive down here and unload and then turn around and go back, or how's that work?
They can do that, there are a couple spaces down here, a concrete pad to park on. It depends on how many people are down there, but you can either come back out or park on the side of the road. That's what, not really a parking lot, I mean, not really a place for a parking lot.
And we'll have to do something kind of, our street department to help get that road. It's actually coming to the right of what the county road is now, is that correct?
That's correct.
There's like an old road that goes down toward, but it actually, some of it might be still on that, but part of it may back to the right. Going down would be to the right side, a little further away from the main road.
Is this always been up there or is it not down here?
I think it's always been.
This is where you can take the, walk down one side of this where something separates it. And then you take the canoes down or kayaks down the other side and hold on when you're going down.
Almost like a, almost like a slide in the middle of it, kind of slide.
Kind of a fling slide that just gets down.
It's a wooden, wooden slide kind of thing. That's a little bigger detail of the way this thing works. That's the pad, not the bar, steps on your side and there's like a wooden slide, sort of, like in the middle of the kind of slide.
So where do the wheelchairs go?
But they're not, they're just having access to parking up top, maybe now, I'm not sure it is.
They don't have access all the way down?
Not really, not really any way of getting all the way down. So that's your question.
I guess I'm just confused because I thought that was.
What is the city's maintenance on that part?
Fifty. Fifty, fifty. About, the original project was a hundred thousand dollars or so, including engineering and construction and admin for that dollar. With the, with the, that price being about twenty-two hundred or so more, it'll be like, city's portion will be about fifty-two thousand or so.
Where's our portion coming in?
Acquisition.
So is it coming out of the rent fund?
No, bond.
I know, but now the fortune divided up for rent, so.
Whatever we, if that's what we go by, yes, sir.
When you know.
They can start pretty quick and the reason, if we do, I would say we do, is how long you wait. And the run is coming, it's going to be hard to get down to the business part of it.
Yeah, right now is the ideal time to do it.
Right now is the ideal time to start, I think they can start pretty quick.
That's why I understood that they were ready to go, since they're awarded in October, surprise month, in the year.
So this is, this is, this is going to come out of bond, right? And the tenants' courts are going to come out of ownership?
Well, the tenants' courts, we got permission, Scott researched that and we got, got the proof.
And the senior center, are we talking about that tonight?
I, wait, I got it on the agenda.
I was trying to figure out where all the money, how much it's all going to add up to leave, because the senior center is going to come out of bond, right?
Well, if we do, and Andrew is still working on getting that proposal for us.
Didn't we bid it, must have?
We just gave permission, the board said, we don't know what the price will be. There's still money to do, you know, get the next insurance laws to do, fire station, if they want to do all the city center, there's still money, but. This was just an idea.
And giving them access isn't going, the city's not going to be liable once they get into the water?
That's right.
We're just liable to get them to the water?
Sure, from our property, we'd be liable, but once they get to the water, it's all good.
And we're still good because someone in a wheelchair can't get down there?
Yes, we, I think we have some kind of access, we should have access to part of ADA, but. With ADA, which is from parking up top.
It's not for access to the water? So are we still good even though we don't have access to the water?
Yes, Adecco signed off on that, so we're good. Yeah, we've been through Adecco a couple times, because it's been delayed. And then they've gone through Adecco, this is what they sent us last week to approve. They're, they're waiting to see what we do because it's taking longer than what we thought. Basically, I'm not giving bids the first time and negotiating with the contractors, getting them, but.
And this pavilion is not going to be planned, it's not going to require the rent center to?
Well, I mean, whoever's taking care of that property, they'll have to kind of clean, there'll be garbage can and stuff there.
But as far as having an employee there?
It's a twenty-four, a twenty-four.
Wait, that's right.
Twenty-four foot square.
Wade, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer to the wheelchair question, tell me your opinion.
Not, not accessible all the way to the river, is this handicap parking active, Dave?
Handicap parking active, Dave?
Yes, sir.
And other than the road?
No.
And at the boat launch, through the handicap park, park at the boat launch?
At the boat launch, okay.
But to get, you gotta go down the stairs from there to get to the.
There will be parking at the boat launch, Jake.
Can I roll up and down the road? Wade?
Sir.
Where's this canoe launch located?
Most of where, most of where. That's what we've been talking about it for the last year, where they're putting and out now.
Round forty-two, round three.
Okay, yeah, I know where you're talking about. So you're going to use the Munchmore property?
Yes, sir.
I have a lot of shit to give.
That's right, that's right. Okay. Well, this time I'd recommend, recommendation to accept the resolution that will award to City Hamilton, the grant for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs through the land and water conversation, congress. And you're right, this will go towards the total cost of a canoe launch project. We're one hundred thousand, one seventy-nine, it's about a fifty-fifty grant, fifty thousand grant and fifty thousand, a little over fifty thousand from the city. Would there be a motion to accept this?
Bert, what we need to do, this is, we need to accept the proposal from Ballard Builders, correct?
That's right.
Eighty-nine forty-five.
Okay.
That's correct.
What's the, what's the total amount of that scope?
I wrote it down.
Eighty-nine thousand four eighty-nine.
You do that first, accept the low bid from Ballard and then do the resolution?
Either way.
Or let's do the bid first. Do a motion to accept the low bid from Ballard Construction, eighty-nine forty-nine.
I'd like a motion.
Okay, great, is there a second?
So this is just to give from the bid, it's not to say do it or not do it?
What if we accept the bid, yeah?
Okay.
Is any other discussion? Paul in favor, say aye. Sir?
May I ask another question?
Just a second.
Will this interfere with any recreation center being built over there?
No, sir.
May no interfere?
Any interfere with any other projects at the river? None. For motion, second, Francis, second. Paul in favor, say aye. Aye. He knows?
No.
Okay. All right, now.
Is it my turn, did you vote yes?
Yes. Now, Scott, the recommendation to accept the resolution. Project fourteen, Al, you got a copy of it from, is there a motion to accept the resolution?
I'd like a motion to accept the resolution.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Paul in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you vote?
No.
Okay. All right, Bert, now, would you mind giving us an update on where we're at in months and where? I know there's what we did when we had, several months ago when they started. They started, got to a certain point, contractor has not come back to fulfill his obligation of the contractor. So it's kind of left us in limbo the last two or three months. And would you please tell us where we're at and where we're headed from here?
It has left us, we, we're trying our best to get the contractor every chance to fulfill his contract. What he did not do that he was supposed to do was get the concrete, the scrap concrete and the smaller pieces that could be crushed by a crusher. And to remove all the rebar from the concrete. Can't use, can't reuse the concrete with rebar in it. He did not do both those kind of things. If you've been down there, you know there's a big pile on one side that's big, big blocks of concrete. Those were supposed to be basketball, football sized pieces, you want them crushed to be crushed as well. He did not do that. We have not paid him all the money that's due him for what he's done. He still, the city still owes him thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars in, out of his contract. We have sent, with Scott reviewed the letter and topped the mail, we have sent the contractor a letter saying that unless he finishes in ten days, that we, the city intends to terminate this contract. He's had every chance to finish it, I didn't want to get into terminating contract and back charges and all that sort of thing. But it does not look like we have any choice with him but to do that. His ten days are, are up. We have set up to take bids for the rock crushing to include the crushing folks. They call it munching, munching the big pieces to get them to go into the crushing. So the crushing folks are including their bid, the price to do the stuff that the contractor did not do. Those things are, those bids are due on the twelfth. And before we finally legally terminate TOA's contract, I'd like to get those bids in and see where we are. And relationship to the money. So that we know if we've got enough money left in his contract at thirty-four five to do that extra work. We, we feel like there's a real good chance that they're here. We also have the option of charging liquidated damages on, on the contract. Those are real hard to prove and collect, but they are available, depending on what those bids come in. So on the twelfth, when we get the bids from the crushing folks, we can evaluate where we are with TOA and their contract, terminate their contract, get them out of way, hire the crushing folks to come in and finish up what we got. When we get all that material crushed, then we can get to the point of being able to fill in the lagoons and cap them off and seal them off and finish the project. We gotta get that material crushed and smaller to be able to backfill into, into the lagoons. To be able to get the compaction that we need in order to get AGM approval on the closeout.
Bert, there's been a little rumors throughout the community that, there's been some concern that after those ponds are filled in, but we were told early on that they would be secured to the concrete, there'd never be any danger in the future regarding the substances in those ponds. Can you just kind of reiterate on that fact or substantiate it a little bit more to let the public know that there is and will not be any harm coming from those according to what, EDA or the EPA or whatever?
Have all approved the plan and that, that's why it's important to get that concrete down to smaller sizes where we can pack it in there tight. When we pack it in there tight and that keeps the water from ever getting down in there and going back down into the groundwater. It makes a solid cap over those things, so nothing can escape.
Is it mixed with any fine, the river, or is it just?
When the, when the crusher gets through it, it'll be, it'll be pretty fine and it'll be like, if you seen that material sometimes we put on parking lots. It's got little pieces in it, but it's got real fine stuff in it too that seals off real tight. That, that's kind of the, the look that it will have. It'll be sealed off tight, watertight and, and fixed so that nothing can come out.
Well, you know, that's one of our concerns, we want to be safe, we want to be safe in the future, we'll have to go back and redo this, really, the cap. But, but, and I felt comfortable with the lady that kept us, kept us along this and she did stress that, so I just, here again, I go.
That, that, what we're doing is pretty standard procedure for capting any sort of hazardous material.
I see.
At landfills or whatever, and it's pretty standard procedure to do what we're doing. Now, AGM has to sign off on it.
I understand.
And, and, and they, they have to approve the final deal, so.
And they've approved everything we've done, I've, I've got a letter today, actually, come in Friday, it was in today, by mail today, that the permit and everything is, they're on board with everything we've done so far, they've approved everything we've done so far, so.
The unfortunate thing about it has been the lack of, the lack of effort from this contractor who didn't crush the concrete like he was supposed to. We've given him every chance and threatened him.
Well, will this end something, they end up having to go to court or can it be settled out of court?
Could be, I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to settle it out of, out of court. We still have thirty-four thousand five hundred of his money that he understands he's not going to get.
Well, good.
He knows he's not going to get that money because he didn't fulfill his contract. And, and I've told him that may not be the end of it, but, you know, we know we have that much money.
Is this reasoning for, or does he give?
He just pulled off, went to another job.
He just pulled off, went somewhere else where he can make more money, I guess, I don't, can't ever tell, it's like, so. But if we can get this issue behind us and get this crushing done, then, then the thing will finish up and be through and.
Watch, we'll know more after Monday.
Know more after we get some bids and have time to analyze things.
Okay.
We're trying to figure a way to, to figure how much material we got out there. Paul and I were talking, on the way up here, we run by the side, we probably going to cross it and the piles so we can figure volume and tonnage and all that sort of thing. Make sure whatever we are, whatever we think we're out, we get a good analysis for it before we move ahead.
But when we, when it was all said and done, there, was there wasn't that much seepage or environmental problems in the end? I mean, it could be all this less big stuff, but I don't, is?
The material in the bottom of the pond has all been solidified already, it's all been, whatever stuff they work in it to, it's been solidified. It's all been made to pretty much as solid already.
Okay.
And the leakers were all drawn off and hauled off and exposed, and what was left, the muddy part, has been pretty much solidified already. Thank y'all, good to see y'all every day.
Good seeing you.
I'll be seeing you regular for a while.
Okay.
And Paul will too.
Okay, Paul, nice to meet you.
Nice, sir.
Next on the agenda, the recommendation approved, little small project, I think, at the Hamilton Sons' house. What they want to do is, where we put the bathroom, just add like a top over the front deck there so you can get out the elements and do some more work. Bill Raptors, and he's got a copy of that ad, Bill, right there, I think, of this. This is from Mr. Paul Moore, he kept, and has been cleaning. And that's what they'd like us to do. This'll pretty much get us done on the outside, I think, and do another one over the kitchen area on the back. Build a forty-eight inch roof over the two kitchen places, paint and stain and shingle roof. Both projects, one is thirty-one hundred, one is five fifty, will be coming out of the Captain's money fund to go toward the Hamilton Sons' house. And he brought this by the other day when I was going to give it to him. And I'd like a recommendation to believe that's done. We went so far now, it's kind of hard to turn back and not be seen.
I'd like a recommendation that we approve the bathroom exterior and the exterior to the house. I think you're, 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 twenty-three thousand one hundred. And this should finish up everything outside.
Should be outside, yes, ma'am.
We know they're going to start on the area there for the parking, do you know anything about that?
They're working with, I think Chris Cockburn's done the concrete, want him to build that.
Oh, I see, okay, so that is good.
Yes, it is good, yeah, we already proved that, and the permission's going to pay for half of that. Francis made a motion, is there a second to it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Greg. Any other discussion? Paul in favor, say aye. Thank you, appreciate that. Today we had bid opens on the tenants' courts and we had two bids. One was from Pro Court, Pro Court Construction out of Huntsville. One was from Dimac Contracting. The low bid was Pro Court out of Huntsville for one nineteen, one nineteen four twenty-three. The other bid was one.
The other bid was one twenty-seven six twenty-three. And it'd be a recommendation to award this to the low bidder, Pro Court. And I did ask Scott if this could come out of the capital improvement fund. There's two hundred nineteen thousand dollars in the capital improvement fund. It is a project that can be approved. He researched it. Anytime you do improvements to the rec center, this would be one of those projects that would be done. It wouldn't have to come out of bond money. It would not have to come out of general fund. That'd be my recommendation to approve this.
So where's this gonna be now? I asked you this last time.
It's the lower ball fields, but we're gonna help build up an area where it's not gonna be a danger of any kind of flooding in that area.
So this price includes will be a build of it?
Yes, yes. Exactly. And we do need tennis courts. I mean, some may think we don't. There's a lot of requests for folks to play tennis and has been for several years.
So what are we gonna do with the old?
I think, you know, he might wanna do, I don't know what he wants to do. There could be back in cages. There could be other things that could be done with it. But they're just too deteriorated to, to build back there. Everybody that looked at it did not recommend building back from that same area.
So is this for like the lights and fence and everything?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're not taking anything from the old courts and moving?
No. This is for everything. All of it together. And I'll give you a copy of it after the meeting. It's broke down, everything, how it cost. And it's about a two, three month process, so they need to get started before it gets colder weather. They're gonna take a while to, so would they be a recommendation to accept this, the low bid?
I might go with a recommendation to accept the low bid, one nineteen four twenty-three.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Greg. Any other discussion? Paul, your favor, say that?
Uh.
Thank you very much. Okay, Andrew. I know. We open bids, day or two after the election, is on the, the, comes on twenty-third.
Fourth or twenty?
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. One day we open bids on the city hall, the next day open bids on splash pads. We've not met since then, other than approving the collection results. So the council really has not seen anything amusements. So this lets you explain wherever we're at and you can start with either one.
What I'm passing out is the bid tab from each project. And then the last is kind of a summary. I'm looking at both of those projects. Let's start with the nature trail.
That's fine. That's a good one.
Now, I'll also pass this around. This will kind of reacquaint you with what the project is about and what's being done. You can come and look through that and pass it down. We were, we received two bids on the project. One was from Battle Miller Construction in Urban Hand for one million one hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars. We had two additive alternates in the project and we can see that on the, the plan as it comes by. There was an area of parking on the east side of the site that could be an option. And that was just, you know, taken out of the project and done as an additive alternate. Should our prices come in, we could add that to it if you had the money and wanted to. The other additive alternate that's listed on your bid tab is for the metal roof. We went with a shingle roof with an underlayment on the base bid. And this was a price that you could add also. So the base bid number is the first number you see. And the second bid was by Dimak Contracting, Lynn, Alabama. And their bid was eight hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars. And the additive alternate for that was twenty-seven nine for the parking area. And the metal roof was sixty-eight thousand. Did you all get a copy of the papers?
Bruce and extras. Thank you, Scott.
When the project started, we had approximately six hundred thousand dollars to work with in a general idea. That we did not go back and revisit the pricing of this project in late stage of the design process. But I feel like we did try to keep everything at a minimum to meet the requirements of your program. So you, you have a splash area, a playground area, an enclosure with a fence. You have ADA parking requirements. The site plan, if you're looking at the site plan, shows the ADA access, the wheelchair accessibility to the walking trail, the restrooms, the playground, the splash area, and even to the public sidewalk. Those are the requirements for ADA accessibility on the project. And so that kind of shows you what our goals were as far as the layout of the parking. And that area on the east side was, for the audience, I have a large copy if I can get it. How much is it on that overall? With this drawing, if you can see it, this is the area of parking that would be added to all of that area. So you would have parking here in front of the pavilion and in front of the splash area, the playground area. And a parking area over here, the walking trail. So the only additive alternates were for a new, a different roof of metal over the pavilion area and this additional parking. As the base bid stands, you'd have grass there and you could still park on it. It's gonna be graded so that it would be ready for parking. So you'd have, you know, overflow parking for ballgames and that sort of thing. It just would not have the crush down. So basically, that was our bid package for them to bid and these were your prices. As far as the third handout I gave you, you can look at the nature trail there. By public bid law, you can negotiate down from their price a maximum of ten percent. And that would be kind of value engineering, different elements out of the project that maybe would help get that down to that amount there of seven hundred and forty-three thousand forty dollars without redesigning or rebidding it publicly. That would be going through the, the bid advertisements and that sort of thing. So that was the summary on the nature trail part.
So it's only the seven forty-three forty?
If you can, you know.
If you negotiate.
And that's taking out?
The reason that, um, parking, what we discussed the other day, rather than having a slab or whatever, was to keep the price down and to use the grass if, as we did some other parts. But if you have to go back and re-bid all of this, then you're gonna have a whole lot more money involved, right?
Um, that's just, it's according to who bids on the project. And I feel you had two good bidders, two big, the companies are reputable. They have experience with splash pads. Both of them have had experience with splash or aquatic parks. So you have a big reputation in both those companies with that. I was informed that the grading on that site and the soils testing difficult added to the cost of working on that site. That, that was probably something that I did not foresee. But as far as, that's something you can't really value engineer out. That's gotta take place to get that graded.
But if you're familiar with that kind of soil, then it have somewhat.
Right.
What was the estimated cost of the project at this point?
You mean early on?
I mean, I mean, this, what we bid, what was your estimated projected cost?
Well, that was early on, it was six hundred, around six hundred. When we were purchasing the equipment and first, purchasing the different playground equipment for the third, the two different playground areas.
Yes. But we're two hundred and twenty-five thousand over the budget.
Right.
From what was anticipated.
Well, yeah.
What'd you say, Ed?
But we're two hundred and twenty-five thousand over the anticipated budget.
That's all I, I thought it's two hundred.
It would be, if you value engineer it, you know, it'd be the twenty-one fifty and two hundred of.
That, that includes splash pad, playground, parking, building with bathroom concession?
Right.
Everything.
The equipment's already been paid for. Right. I'm not, I'm not anybody. Paying, paying equipment.
Well, I haven't been seeing it, but it's.
It's waiting for you.
The pavilion is not an open air pavilion. Some of you may not have kept up with it through the, the months. It is a, a concrete block. It would be the split face block like what is out there at the ball fields. It would have the restroom requirements. It would meet ADA. The concession stand meets ADA. We have the heights for ADA. Even the worker could be handicapped and still run the concession stand and.
And, and the reason for it being enclosed was so it could have birthday parties or whatever, auctions. And there could be a fee charged for that facility for having it done. And have to make a appointment, of course, to use it scheduled.
So it's completely enclosed?
No, the open air would be the picnic area. It'd be half and half.
Yeah, there is the open beam, like tables underneath.
It's not completely open. It's more or less half and. Are there any other questions about the design? I don't know if you are clear on what's there. Are you clear on the, the site plan?
You wanna go to the city hall project and then come back to this?
Okay. The city hall, we had three bidders. They were Dimak Contracting at three hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred. HN Construction in Florence, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. RDT Enterprises out of Florence for four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So Dimak Contracting is the apparent low bidder with three hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred.
All right. Now let's explain what all that included in that bid.
Okay.
What, so we've done the roof, we've done the painting, exterior is pretty much finished.
That's correct.
This would be all the interior changes made to the building or any additions made to the roof.
This is the diagram of the first floor. Areas that might need to be made, openings made larger for wheelchair accessibility or the payment windows for the water and cable. The second floor, you'd have a handrail that would be raised to forty-two inches. Some handrail and fire rated doors in the stairwell to provide the fire, meet the fire code for access, exit from the second floor. Primarily, the work result revolves around ADA access and the fire codes.
And keeping it a historical?
And the his, well, there are, the only work really in the historical home is reversing the door swing on the front door to where it swings out for egress. And this is a summary of that. You wanna flip through that here. And there again, on the low bid of three hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred, if you were to negotiate ten percent out of that bid, that would be deleting the meeting room upstairs or deleting, there's just not a lot of extra in this one to delete without imposing on fire codes or ADA, but.
You might elaborate on that. The conference room there is plenty big enough to have the council meetings in. And with the chairs that we're getting, it could go around the wall. And if it were entailed a larger access, then it could be, since it would be an annex, could be used. And that would save money of having to enclose that area upstairs.
We're enclosing a room and it's three new walls that would be built to have a council room that would seat almost about half of what this room seats. And there would be a council desk and, and, you know, chair seating in that room. It would have two doors. So you could eliminate three walls and two doors. And that would be summed toward your ten percent if you wanted to negotiate that out of the project. The LED was a consideration on lowering your operating expenses in the project. But we omitted that as a, an alternate. It just was going to be over the budget to do that at this time. But that's something that can be done over a period of time in your maintenance of the building. As things go out, they can be retrofitted with the LED and begin saving that energy.
You might change it out with a can of lights. There's dozens of those.
Right. And that is a, a big saver.
That's, this includes all interior painting, floor covering, everything, top, bottom.
We're not repainting the trim. We're gonna refinish three hardwood floors in, in three different rooms. So you're not providing any new floor covering where there was VCT tile. So a lot of the floor coverings are gonna be able to remain in place. The trim paint is in excellent condition. It's gonna remain, except where there's new construction, they'll have to paint to match. The, all of the hardware on the doors and existing doors, there's one or two doors that'll need to be changed out to be fire rated to ensure safety. And those doors can be expensive. So we had some cost involved in those doors, to get the fire rated doors. I would just ask that you think on this and review it. And maybe I can come back in the next meeting if you have questions or do you need any more information from me?
Thank you. Be better for everybody to be on the same page. How much longer, 'cause I don't wanna resent the bids at all, that takes forever and costs us a lot more money. See if we can work within the budget of what we got and make this work if possible.
Well, maybe.
So how much longer, I know they can't, the, the contractors can't wait.
Thirty days from the bid date. So we've got till September twenty-fourth or so. You'll be meeting again.
Two weeks from now. I mean, two weeks from last night.
What is the date on that? The ninth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
I'm sorry. What was the, same question. What's the, what was the estimated projected cost for this bidding on the class?
We didn't have, we didn't know what was going, we didn't have a finger in our head. I did. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know.
Because of the unknowns and because it's a lot of demolition.
Right.
You don't know how much the contractor's gonna allow for things that they can't see. We did some preliminary demo in certain areas so they could look behind the wall and see what was there. And we had a required mandatory walkthrough of the contractors that wanted to bid the project. So we had a good attendance. They came and walked to each of these areas where we're doing work and were able to look at it and have a good idea of what, what was expected and what might, you know, be a, a problem rather than just looking at the plans. So we use photographs as well to convey where the work was being done. So I think they had a good feel for what, what work needed to be done there.
I'll make a case in spring. Review it so the next two weeks, give it heard. If anybody has any questions, give a review.
Yeah.
Go over, like sit down, we can go over a bit of this step by step.
There's been a, there's been a set of both of these projects in the office and mayor all since the bid date or before the bid date. So anyone can look at that and ask questions and see where the work's being done in the, the firehouse and in the, and on the nature trail as well. as well.
Thank you, Andrew. I know you put hundreds of hours into these projects.
Thank you, I've enjoyed it. Just let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, would be a motion to adjourn. Great, any motions or second? Paul in favor, say aye.